Peace be upon you, this is Aiden Mirza from InOurReason.com and we're gonna be continuing on with our Quran study session. This is session number ten and we left off at chapter seven, verse one sixty-seven. So let's continue on from there. In the name of God, the almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. Verse one sixty-eight, and we divided them in the earth into communities, some of them righteous and some of them other than that. And we tried them with good things and evil deeds that they might return. Now this is talking about the people of Musa, that's what the context is about. And they followed after them successors who inherited the writ, taking the goods of the fleeting life and saying it will be forgiven us. And if there come to them goods to like thereof, they will take them. Has there not been taken from them an agreement to the writ that they ascribe not to God save the truth? And that they study what is therein, and the abode of the hereafter is better for those up prudent fear. Will you then not use reason? So this is the agreement that was made with the people of Musa, they were given the Al Kitab, the book. So. Reading between the lines, this is the agreement that's made with with us, the believers, those who inherited the writ, that is in the Quran as well. That we are to not ascribe to God anything but the truth and that we are to study what is in the writ. And those who hold fast to writ and uphold the duty because not to be lost the reward of those who do right. So, holding fast to the writ. And upholding the duty, these come together, you see, so. It doesn't have anything to do with ritual prayer, what it's talking about is upholding the commandments that are found in the writ. You'll find in many places in the Quran where the writ, the Al Kitab, is joined with upholding the duty, I I encourage you to look this up. Um, that makes me think that upholding duty has to do with upholding the commandments of God in the writ. Uh, in a general sense, and then obviously in the context, you can determine what exactly that duty is. That's the understanding of Salat. I'm not saying that worship is not a duty, I'm just saying that the duty is much more broader than what the traditionalist or the Muslims uh think that it is. And if you want more information, I suggest you look at Brother Gahan's work. Uh, addenda to the Quran in which he uh has a whole article on this, Salat and Zagat Reconsidered. One seventy-one, and when we raise the mountain above them as if it were a canopy. And they suppose it was to fall upon them. Hold fast what we give you and remember what is therein that you might be in prudent fear. So the agreement that was just referred to earlier was not 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 an agreement taken to them that they um. That ascribe not to God save the truth and that they study what is therein. See here, it's being rehashed. Hold fast what we give you, remember what is therein that you might be in prudent fear. And when thy Lord brought forth from the children of Adam from their uh backs, their progeny, and ma- made them bear witness to themselves. Am I not your lord? They said, we bear witness, lest you say on the day of resurrection of this were we unaware? Or you say our fathers but ascribed a partnership before, and we were progeny after them. Will thou then destroy us for what the creators of vanity did? Or the um. Creators of vanity, Muktalon means those who um basically come up with, you know, follow their own desires. Okay, now, this this verses has a lot of interpretations as to what this means. And I, like I said in the last session, my understanding is that this is the second life. And that we were, uh, we had a life before this and uh um we all ate from the tree. Um, that's my understanding of it. So this is what is referring to, that on uh on in the previous life. Uh, God made uh an agreement with us and he, that we testified that, you know, you are our lord. So this excuse that we did not know uh will not um. Will not help us on the day of resurrection. Now as to why we don't remember any of the previous life, i- if you know anything about Satan, one of the things he does is that he makes people forget. Uh, and we'll we'll get to that when we get to that, but so, you know, after eating from the tree, my understanding is we forgot what what what. Transpired and then, you know, we were raised up uh in the second life. That's just my understanding. One seventy-three. All you say our fathers but described a partnership before and we were progeny after them, will thou then destroy us for what the creators of vanity did? And thus do we set out and detail the proofs and that they might return. And recite thou to them the report of him to whom we gave our proofs, but he detached himself from them. So that Satan followed him and he was of those who are. So, this was someone to whom God gave his proofs as in his revelation. Um, he he was cognizant of it, but he detached himself from it as it, he did not follow uh God's uh exhortations. So that Satan followed him and he was of those who are. And had we willed, we would have raised him thereby, but he clung to the earth and followed his vain desire. So his likeness is as the likeness of a dog. If thou win him over, he pants. Or if thou leave him, he pants. That is the likeness of the people who deny our proofs. So relate thou to them their story that they might reflect. Evil as an example are the people who deny our proofs and they wrong their souls. Whom God guides, he is guided, and whom God sends astray is they who are the losers. One seventy-nine, and we have created for Gehenna many among the dominai and the servai. And this is in the traditional understanding, it's talking about the Al Jin and Al Ins. They have our hearts wherewith they understand not, and they have eyes wherewith they see not, and they have ears wherewith they hear not. Those are like the cattle, nay, they are further astray, is they who are the heedless. So they're not using the faculties that God gifted them with basically, and because they're not using those faculties. Uh, in the manner that they are to be used, they are like the cattle, nay, they are further astray, it is they who are the heedless. They're heedless of the proofs of God. They're heedless uh of the majesty of God, they're heedless of why they're here. And to God belong the fairest names, then call to him by them, and leave those who deviate concerning his names, they will be rewarded for what they did. And among those we created is a community which guides in truth and does justice thereby. And those who deny our proofs, we will deal with them by degrees whence they know not. So my understanding of this is that uh in a in any generation, in any uh timeframe, there is a community that guides. In truth and does justice thereby, they are holding fast to the law. And those who deny our proofs, we will deal with them by degrees whence they know not, and I grant them respite, my le- my plan is firm. Now this respiting of God, you know, you see the evildoers, they're going around, you know, just basically. Creating chaos and causing corruption in the land and. It seems like, you know, they're giving, they're giving more, more opportunities, more, more power to do this. And this is the plan of God, I mean, God, God gives them the the uh the the resources, so they increase in sin. And this will be talked about somewhere else in the Quran, so uh this is, it's it's not that it's good for them. Uh, th- this uh this allowance of God is actually bad for them because they only are accumulating more sins. So that's the God, the plan of God, it's firm. Have they not reflected their companion is not possessed, he is only a clear warner. So now this is the role of the messenger, he's a clear warner. This whole chapter is about warning. One eighty-five, have they not considered the dominion of the heavens and the earth and what things God has created and that it may be that their term has drawn nigh? And what narration after this will they believe? Whom God sends astray, there is no guide for him, and he leaves them wandering blindly in their inordinacy. They ask thee concerning the hour, when is its arrival? Say thou, knowledge thereof is but with my lord, none reveals its time save he. It weighs heavily in the heavens and the earth. It comes not upon you save unexpectedly. They ask thee as thou, as though thou were privy thereto, say thou, knowledge thereof is but with God, but most men know not. Now this is really critical because in the Hadith universe, you will find Muhammad knowing all sorts of signs. About the hour and uh the Quran denies him this information. Um, so that's why you can tell that the Hadiths are forged. They have nothing to do with the, what the Quran is talking about. Say thou, I have no power to do myself benefit or harm save that God should will. And had I knowledge of the unseen, I would have acquired abundance of wealth and evil would not have touched me. I am only a warner and bearer of glad tidings to people who believe. He it is that created you from a single soul, and he created there from its mate, that he might be reassured thereby. Then when he covers her, she bears a light load, and she passes by with it. And when it becomes heavy, they call to God their lord. If thou givest us a sound one, we will be among the grateful, as in, you know, the. The child has no, you know, defects. Then when he gives them a sound one, they appoint him da- partners in what he gave them, but exalted is God above that to which they ascribe a partnership. Ascribe their partnership to what creates not anything when they are created. Now this goes back to the thing that God says, call to him. Uh, sincere uh in your doctrine. So they called him sincere, you know, if you give us a sound one, we will be among the grateful. But when he gave them a sound one, then they uh started thanking um the partners of God that they claim. Um. And the argument is, they ascribe their partnership to what creates not anything when they are created. See, everything is created by God. And nothing can create, only God creates. And they are not able to help them, nor do they help themselves. So that's the powerlessness of their idols, they are not able to help them. And they cannot even help themselves. And if you invite them to the guidance, they follow you not. It is the same to you whether you call to them or are silent. Now this is referring to the the idol worshippers, that if you invite them to the guidance, uh they will not follow you. And this is actually one of the proofs of uh God in the Quran. Um, and chapter two, in the beginning, it said. Uh, those who are indifferent to warning is the same to them whether you warn them, do not warn them, they do not believe, see? And so, most men do not believe, and this is really the challenge that invite them to the guidance, they will not follow you. And, you know, it's pointless to try to get them to stop worshiping, ascribing partnership to God. And now the attack changes a little bit, it says, those to whom you call other than God are servants like you, so call them and let them respond to you if you be truthful. So this is a challenge to those people who are ascribing partnerships to God, who are calling Jesus or Muhammad or whoever. Call these uh personalities and let them respond to you, if you be truthful. Have their legs wherewith they walk, or have their hands wherewith they hold, or have their eyes wherewith they see, or have their ears wherewith they hear. Say thou, call your partners, then scheme against me and grant me no respite. Now, I'll just take you, give you an example of Christians, right? The Christians, they um. They worship, they do worship, they worship uh Jesus and they have his uh idol, which is him. Which is a man who is, you know, crucified on a cross, right? And so the argument is that he has the statue, it has legs, but it can't walk, it has. Hands, but it cannot hold anything, it has eyes, but it doesn't see anything, and it has ears and it can't hear anything, so, I mean, these, it's it's. These are objects, so, so obviously if you call to them, then call and see if they can help you. And then it says, my ally is God who sent down the writ, and he is an ally to the righteous. And those to whom you call other than him are unable to help you, nor do they help themselves. True. And if you invite them to guidance, they hear not, and thou seest them looking at thee but they see not. Now this is talking about you, the believer. Um, calling these idol worshippers, those ascribing a partnership to guidance, and the truth is they don't hear and they don't see. Um, because they're worshiping things that also don't hear and don't see, so, you know, their hearts have become hmm harder than rocks. One ninety-nine, take thou the surplus and enjoy in thou what is customary and turn thou away from the ignorant. And if they provoke thee a provocation from the Satan, seek thou refuge in God, he is hearing and knowing. Those who are in prudent fear, when a visitation from the Satan touches them, they take heed, and then do they see? So they remember, basically, that they're supposed to seek refuge in God, and when they do, then they see. When their brethren assist them in error, then do they not seize? Now this is talking about the unbelievers or the friends of Satan, that when um. They're the the Shayatin, they're they're the brethren of the unbelievers, so when they assist them in error, they do not. Um, leave any stone unturned, that's what the word Yuxeron really means. And when thou bringest them not a proof, they say, oh, that thou hadst but chosen one, say thou. I follow only what is real to me from my lord. This is a means of insight from your lord and guidance and a mercy for people who believe. Now see, here's the thing, this is basically what, this is a practical example of what is being talked about, see? Um, that when, because the proof they're looking for is 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 a miracle, right? And the whole Quranic presentation is that there there are no miracles, the Quran is sufficient proof. Okay, and also the Quran is referencing to you the proofs, you see, you walk by day and night, you see the sun, the moon, the. Um, you know, the the mercy of God and the punishments of God, you're seeing all this, this, these are proofs. There's no like, proof like some angels coming down from the sky, that's what they want. Uh, and the only proof they're gonna see that gonna make them believe is when God's punishment comes, but then it'll be too late. So, when Muhammad is not able to meet them at the challenge, they say, oh, that the house was chosen one, so just, why don't you just make something up? And uh this is the, their brethren assisting them in error, I mean, they, these people, you know, they always have an answer, they always have an answer. They they're never willing to really consider, they just have to have a comeback. You meet these people every day of your life. So Muhammad is being instructed, this is the speech of the messenger, I follow only what is real to me from my lord. This is a means of insight from your lord and guidance and a mercy for people who believe. I mean, this is it, this is it, this is all you're gonna get. And when the Quran is recited, heeded, and listened attentively, that you might obtain mercy. And remember thou thy lord within within thy soul in humility and fear, and without publicity of speech. Morning and evening, and be thou not among the heedless. Those who are in the presence of thy lord are not too proud for his service, and they glorify him and they submit to him. I thought I'd show you this comment by Brother Gahan's, verse two oh five, where it says, and. Remember thou thy lord within thy soul in humility and fear and without publicity of speech. Uh, Brother Gahan says here, that is privately, this imperative jars for the traditionalist predile- predilection for huge communal prayers. Rituals, the preamble to which entails disturbing the entire neighborhood, he's talking about the Azan. Yeah, it's true. Anyway, so that finishes up chapter seven, we're gonna jump into chapter eight. Spoils of war, in the name of God, the almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. They ask thee about the spoils of war, say thou, the spoils of war are for God and the messenger, so be in prudent fear of God. And make right in what is between you, and obey God and his messenger if you be believers. Now see, this is the thing, obey God and his messenger. Every time you say Quran is sufficient, the messenger came with the Quran, the Quran is all we need. You you get the Muslims who are really following their ancestors blindly. Uh, and because they don't find m- most of what they're doing in the Quran, they're quick. To say, we need the Hadith literature, because the Quran directs us to say, directs us to obey God and his messenger. And uh, but this is really what, if you look at it, it's talking about obeying God and his messenger. And here, say thou, this is what the messenger is being told to say, so this is what it means to obey this imperative, the spoils of war are for God and the messenger. And this specifically, i- in the context, this is talking about a specific time, when the messenger was alive. And uh, they were asking a specific question. Basically, I'm trying to get at obey God and his messenger. Um, you need to look at it in context to see what exactly does, i- is it referencing to? You can't just pull this out and then run away and say, okay, whatever Bukhari wrote. And he didn't have any authorization from Muhammad or anyone, or from God, um, to write this or and make up stories. Um, why should we take those stories? We already have the Quran. Now, it says, if you be believers, now, believers. The believers, the definition of that follows, verse two. The believers are but those who, when God is remembered, their hearts are afraid, and when its proofs are recited to them, it increases them in faith. And in their lord, they place their trust, those who uphold the duty, and of what we have provided them, they spend. It is they who are the believers in truth, they have degrees with their lord and forgiveness and a noble provision. Now you'll notice that this uh part of this characteristics also found in chapter two, in the beginning where it says uh. Uh, that is the writ about which there is no doubt guidance for those of prudent fear, those who um believe in the unseen. And, let's just go back to that, I don't wanna mess it up. Those who believe in the unseen and uphold the duty and what we have provided them, they spend. And those who believe in what was sent down to thee and what was done, sent down before the end of the hereafter, they are certain. Those are upon guidance from their lord. It's talking about those of prudent fear, Muttaqeen, see? But uh here, the believers, they also share some of these characteristics. Just trying to point, point that out to you. Anyway, so, upholding duty, like I said, has. The traditionalists are in their understanding of it, and he's saying it means a ritual prayer facing the idol Makkah. Uh, idol Kaba in in the Makkah, there's nothing to do with that, this is upholding a duty, is to obey the imperatives. That are found in the Quran, in in the writ of God. So. Verse five, like as thy lord brought thee forth from thy house in truth, and affection among the believers was averse. Disputing with thee concerning the truth after it had become clear, as if they were being driven to death when they were looking on. And when God promised you one of the true groups that it would be yours, and you wished that the unarmed one might be yours. But God will to establish the truth by his words and to cut off the root of the false claimers of guidance. That he might establish the truth and bring vanity to nothing, though the lawbreakers were averse. When you sought succor of your lord and he responded to you, I will assist you with a thousand angels in ranks. And God made it only as glad tidings, and that your hearts might find rest thereby. And there is no help save from God, God is exalted in might and wise. When he made slumber overcome you as security from him, and sent down upon you water from the sky that he might purify you thereby. And to remove from you the scourge of the Satan, and to fortify your heart, and make firm thereby your feet. When thy lord instructed the angels, I am with you, so make firm those who heed warning. Thou will cast terror into the hearts of those who ignore warning, so strike above the necks and strike from them every fingertip. Verse thirteen, is it not that they made a breach with God and his messenger, and whoso makes a breach with God and his messenger? God is severe in retribution. Made a breach with God and his messenger, this is important because this is defining, this is telling you who these people were, these were the. False claimers of guidance, the Al Kafirun, the 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 false claimers of guidance are actually within the ranks of the the community. Um, you know, it says in the Quran, it says, uh. W- when they meet the believers, they say, we believe, but they, um, when they are with the Shayatin, they say, we are not, uh, we we, we were only mocking. So these are the false claimers of guidance and they had made a breach with God and his messenger. So now, it's basically war against them. That taste it, and that for the false claimers of guidance is the punishment of fire. Oh, you who heed warning. When you meet those who ignore warning, advancing, turn not your backs to them. And whoso that day turns his back to them save as a maneuver for battle or joining a company. He has incurred wrath from God and his shelter is Gehenna, and evil is the journey's end. And you killed them not, but God killed them, and thou threwest not, when thou didst throw, but God threw. And that he might test the believers by a fair trial from him, God is hearing and knowing that. And because God makes weak the plan of the false claimers of guidance. If you seek decision, the decision has come to you, and if you cease, it is better for you. But if you return, we will return, and your company will avail you nothing, though it be numerous, and that God is with the believers. Oh, you who heed warning, obey God and his messenger, and turn not away from him when you hear. Again, obey God and his messenger. But but you have to see in context, what is this referring to? And turn not away from him when you hear. Now, this turning away from him when you hear, this will be um picked up again, so just keep this in mind. And be not as those who say we have heard and they hear not, what have they heard? What have they not really heard, what they're saying we have heard? This is a question, right? You're gonna find the answer later. The worst of beasts in the sight of God are the deaf, the dumb, those who do not reason. And had God known any good in them, he would have made them hear, and had he made them hear, they would have turned away, and they are averse. So again, this whole hearing thing, what 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 is it supposed to hear that they're not hearing? And and i- if God had found any good in them, he would have made them hear. And this also answers the question about why why God guides and why he doesn't guide, see, if God would have known any good in them, he would have made them here, it's talking about guidance. Hmm, jumping the gun here, but anyway, we're gonna pick this up. Oh, you heed warning, respond to God and the messenger when he calls you to what gives you life, and know that God stands between a man and his heart, and that to him you will be gathered. See, again, responding to God and the messenger when he calls to what gives you life, what what is this? It's talking about the scripture. And be in prudent fear of a means of denial, not to befall those who do wrong among you exclusively, and know that God is severe in retribution. And remember when you were few and oppressed in the land, fearing that the people would snatch you away, but he gave you refuge and strengthened you with his help. And provided you with good things that you might be grateful. Oh, you heed warning, betray not God and his messenger, or betray your trust when you know, see, this is a warning to the. Allazina Amanu, why? Because the Al Kafirun, they did do this, they made a breach with God and his messenger, they betrayed him. So don't betray God and his messenger and don't betray your trusts. And what, and know that your wealth and your children are but a means of denial, and that with God is a great reward. Now you have to understand, this is the context of war, right? I mean, people stand to lose and they stand to gain. Um, but so basically, the 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 true, the people with the true faith, they're being. Uh, filtered out, you know, a- and the people who are the wavers and the. Uh, false claimers of guidance, they are also being filtered out. Oh, you heed warning, if you be in prudent fear of God, he will make for your division and remove from you your evil deeds and forgive you. And God is possessor of tremendous bounty. And when those who ignore warning schemed against thee to restrain thee or to kill thee or to drive thee out, and they scheme, and God schemes, and God is the best of schemers. And the backdrop of chapter seven, uh, which was all about, about warning a community. Um, this makes sense, because Muhammad's job as a messenger was to warn, and these men were basically trying to. Scheme against him, to either restrain him or to capture him or to kill him or to drive him out. And it says, and when our proofs are recited to them, they say, we have heard, if we wish we could speak the like of this, this is only the legends of the former peoples. You see, this is what they were not, they're not, they're saying they're here, but they don't hear. And if God had found any good in them, he would have made them hear, and if he had made them hear, they would have turned away. This is it, see, the 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 Quran, when the Quran is being recited to them, and that's why it says to, um. It says here, oh, you heed warning, respond to God and the messenger when he calls you to what gives you life. And also, in in the the context of the chapter, this is talking about a military expedition, this is talking about fighting in the cause of God, we need to remember that. Okay, so to continue. And when they say, oh, God, if this be the truth from thee, then rain thou down upon us stones from the sky or bring thou as a painful punishment. But God would not punish them when thou art among them, and God would not punish them as they sought forgiveness. Now see, this is the thing, this is because they have not driven the messenger out. God's punishment, like we looked at chapter seven, when they. Aggressed against the messengers, when they took action against the messengers, to try to drive them out, that's when the punishment ca- came. This is all part of the God protocol, if you want more information, I suggest you look at Brother Gahan's work, the God protocol. And God would not punish them as they sought forgiveness, so, because God is the merciful, right? But how can they not be punished by God when they turn away from the inviolable place of worship and are not its allies, its allies are only those of prudent fear? But most of them know not, and their duty at the house is only whistling and clapping, so taste the punishment for what you denied. Now this is kind of interesting thing, right? Because it's talking about Salat here. What kind of Salat, even if you, you know, imagine that they were doing some pagan ritual or whatever? Wh- what was, their worship was whistling and clapping? I mean, this. Uh, if you read Brother Gahan's footnotes here, he makes an excellent point, that this is more akin to uh hearing debates. At uh this inviolable place of worship between people and basically, you know, taking it as an entertainment center. Not as, you know, a place where God is to be truly worshipped. So that was their duty. Again, the traditional understanding that this is a ritual prayer does not make any sense here. Those who ignore warning spend their wealth in turning away from the path of God, so will they spend it, then will it become a sorrow for them, then will they be defeated? And those who ignore warning will be get into Gehenna. I think I wanted to mention, I keep saying this in my videos, um. That this eh eh Mas'ul Haram, inviolable place of worship, this is not the Mas'ul Haram that the Saudis have made up. Okay, you just, because you give a place a name and you, you know, and it houses your stone idol and you say, okay, this is the Mas'ul Haram, that's not. We don't know, this place is gone, it's 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 finished, the Quran is talking about it. It's for the believers at that time, it's over, it's not there anymore. The messenger is not here anymore either, so. This was a platform where the messenger was supposed to go and deliver God's warning. That's really what we get out of it from the Quran. That God might separate the bad from the good, and that the bad will he place one upon another and heap it all together, and place it in Gehenna, it is. And place it in Gehenna, it is they who are the losers. Say thou to those who ignore warning, if they see, if they seize, what is past will be forgiven them, but if they return, then the practice of the former peoples has gone before. As in, God will destroy them as he has destroyed the previous generations. And fight them until there is no means of denial and the doctrine is entirely for God and if they seize, God sees what they do. See, fighting in the cause of God is a big thing. Now here's the 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 traditionalist seizes upon this verse and he says, okay, this means that we can do jihad and fight and kill murder people, no. There is no means of denial, as in there's no persecution and the doctrine entirely for God. And lest you forget, the doctrine of God states that there's no compulsion in religion, okay? So that's what it means that it's it's. You are to fight them when they are fighting you. Okay, that's what they they're persecuting you, so fight them. And when the doctrine is entirely for God, as in it's established and that uh men can decide for themselves. If they want to. You know, submit to God or not, then that's what it's talking about, it's not talking about enforcing Al Islam upon people. The religion Islam upon people. Verse forty, and if they turn away, then know that God is your protector, excellent is the protector and excellent is the helper. And know that anything you take in spoils to God belong its fifth and to the messenger. And to the relatives and the fatherless and the poor and the wayfarer, if you believe in God and what we send down upon our servant on the day of division. The day the two hosts met and God is over all things powerful. Okay, so now this is answering the question that was asked in the beginning of this chapter. Uh, they asked you about the spoils of war, so now it's being told what you need to do. And also. And if you believe in God and what we send down upon our servant on the day of division. The division between the. I mean, really, God gave victory to the believers and on this day, right? And uh. Against, I guess. Unsurmountable odds and. This 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 Sura was sent down on that day. Verse forty-two, when you were on the near bank and they were on the far bank and the caravan was lower than you. And had you agreed to meet, you would have failed in the appointment, but that God might conclude a matter what was done, that was done. That there might perish he who perished upon clear evidence and that there might live he who lived upon clear evidence and God is hearing and knowing. When God showed them in thy dream as few. And had he shown them as many, you would have lost heart and disputed together over the matter, but God delivered, he knows what is in the breasts. And when he showed them, when you met in your eyes as few. And lessen you in their eyes that God might conclude a matter that was done and to God are matters returned. So basically, God. Made it so, you know, the armies would engage. Um, each party was shown as less in number than it actually was in the other party's eye. Oh, you heed warning, when you meet a company, stand firm and remember God much that you might be successful. And obey God and his messenger and dispute not together lest you lose heart and your spirit leave you and be patient, God is with the patient. See, now here it's talking about messenger in the context of a military. Uh, exercise, I mean, this was war, right? So you have to follow the leader, so this is what it's saying, dispute not together. And be not like those who come forth from their homes boastfully and to be seen of men and turn away from the path of God and God encompasses what they do. And when the Satan made their deeds fair to them and said, none among men can defeat you this day when I am at your side. Then when the two companies come came within sight of one another, he turned on his heels and said, I am queer of you. I see what you see not, I fear God and God is severe in retribution. When the wavers and those in whose hearts is disease said their doctrine has deceived these. But whoso places his trust in God, then God is exalted in might and wise. If you read this carefully, you'll notice that this the wavers, you know, this is what is being talked about, the wavers were also coming out of their houses boastfully. I mean, obviously, the Allazina Kafirun, those who are indifferent to warning and the Al Kafirun who were the enemies of the God of God and his messenger, they were. You know. In the opposing rank, they uh on first glance, it's. It's talking about them and that's true, but it's also talking about the wavers, so it's talking about, because again, this is. This is the the day of the division, Yom al-Furqan, which means that the division is being made between the believers, the true believers. And the 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 wavers, the false believers and um. That's why this 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 part is enveloping both parties, if you understand what I mean. When the waiver is said, and those in whose hearts is disease. Uh, this talk about the Al Kafirun, their doctrine has deceived these, but whoso places his trust in God, then God is exalted in might and wise. So they came out with huff and puff and then all of a sudden when they actually saw the army. Uh, then they started doubting and they said, you know. This isn't gonna work. Fifty, and if thou could see when the angels take those who ignore warning, striking their faces and their backs. And taste the punishment of the consuming fire, for it is that your hands have sent ahead and that God is not unjust to his servants. Like the case of the house of Pharaoh and those before them, they denied the proofs of God. So God sees them for their transgressions, God is strong, severe in retribution. Now, if you remember in chapter seven, this was the last example of God protocol where. Uh, Faron Pharaoh and he was given, when he was shown the proofs of God and he rejected them. And his people and him were destroyed, so. So this is being referenced, this is talking about what we just saw earlier in. Chapter seven, just trying to show you the Quran is actually. It it flows, it flows, you just have to keep these things in mind as you read the chapters. Is it not that God changes not the favor he bestows upon a people until they change what is in their souls and that God is hearing and knowing? So you have to change yourself. Like really change yourself. Like the case of the house of Pharaoh and those before them, they denied the proofs of their Lord, so we destroyed them for their transgressions and drowned the house of Pharaoh, Faron. And all were wrongdoers. The worst of beasts in the sight of God are those who ignore warning, for they do not believe. Those from whom thou takest a covenant, then they take, then they break their covenant every time and they are not in prudent fear. So you see that prudent fear also has to do with uh abiding with your covenant. And if thou find them in war, then put thou fear by them into those behind them that they might take heed. And if thou fear treachery from a people, then cast thou back to them likewise, God loves not the treacherous. And let not those who ignore warning think that they have got away, they cannot escape. And prepare for them what you are able of forces and of cavalry to terrify thereby the enemy of God and your enemy. And others besides them whom you know not, God knows them. And whatever you spend in the cause of God will be repaired to you in full and you will not be wronged. And if they incline to peace, then incline thou to it and place thou thy trust in God, he is the hearing, the knowing. And if they intend to deceive thee, then sufficient for thee is God, he it is that strengthened thee with his help and with the believers. And he united their hearts, hast thou spent all that is in the earth, thou couldst not have united their hearts, but God united them, he is exalted in might and wise. Verse sixty-four, oh prophet, God is sufficient for thee and those who follow thee among the believers. Oh prophet, rouse thou the believers to fight, if there be of you twenty patient, they will defeat two hundred. And if there be of you a hundred, they will defeat a thousand of those who ignore warning, because there are people who understand not. Now has God lightened for you and he knows there is a weakness in you. So if there be of you a hundred patient, they will defeat two hundred. And if there be of you a thousand, they will defeat two thousand by the leave of God and God is with the patient. It is not for a prophet to have captives until he has battled strenuously in the land. You desire the goods of the world and God desires the hereafter and God is exalted in might and wise. Had it not been for a writ from God, which had gone before, a great punishment would have touched you for what you took. So eat of what you took in spoils as lawful and good and be in prudent fear of God, God is forgiving and merciful. So basically, they took captives. When they were not supposed to take captives, that's why it's picked up here. Verse seventy, oh prophet, say thou to those in use in your hands of the captives. If God knows any good in your hearts, he will give you better than what has been taken from you and he will forgive you and God is forgiving and merciful. See this. This is an echo of what we read before, that had God known any good in them, he would have made them here. So it's saying, if God knows any good in your hearts, he will give you better than what he has taken from you, as in he will give you faith. And he will forgive you. And if they wish to betray thee, then they have betrayed God before, but he placed them in subjection and God is knowing and wise. See betrayal. I'm just trying to show you that the qualities of a good man, you know, are the qualities that we consider a good man to be, he's he's honest. He's truthful, he he abides by his word, he holds to his covenant. Um, this is really what it is, so these people, they betrayed God before, so there is no good in them. And what happened to them, they were placed in subjection. Those who heeded warning and emigrated and strove with their property and their lives in the cause of God and those who gave shelter and helped. Those are allies one of another and those who heed warning. But have not immigrated, you are not required to protect them from an- anything until they immigrate. And if they seek help from you within the doctrine, you are required to help save against the people between whom and you is in agreement and God sees what you do. Anyway, coming back to this thing, oh prophet, say thou to those in his ha- in in your hands of the captives. If God knows any good in your hearts, he will give you better than what he has taken from you. Like I said, this is talking about that God would give them faith. And if they wish to betray thee, then they have got, then they have betrayed God before, but he placed them in subjection, so. These men are in subjection because of their own deeds, you know. And 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 uh how, if they change what is in their hearts, and so this was already talked about earlier. Says, how can I go, how can God, how can God? Where did that go? Is it not that God changes not the favor he bestows upon a people until they change what is in their souls? If they become righteous, then God will guide them. Anyway, to continue. Verse seventy-three, and those who ignore warning are allies of one another, save you do it, they will be means of denial in the land and great corruption. And those who heed warning and immigrate and strive in the cause of God and those who give shelter and help, it is they who are the believers in truth, they have forgiveness and noble provision. So we started out with the definition of the well, the characteristics of the believers in the beginning of this chapter and now this completes the list. So they are those who heed warning and they immigrate and strive in the cause of God and they give shelter and help. These are the believers in truth. Because again, this is talking about the Furqan, right? The Quran itself is a Furqan, by the way, so. I mean, in a sense, this this day was a Furqan, as in, you know, you got to see the clear differentiation between the believers in truth and the rest of the people. And uh. The Quran is also giving you this this differentiation. And those who heed warning therefore thereafter and immigrate and strike beside you, those are of you, but those of kinship are closer to one another in the writ of God. God knows all things now. This is key, but those of kinship are closer to one another in the writ of God, so this is the writ of God, like I said, the writ of God is the complete set of commands that God sent to mankind, so. Those who are related with us by blood, they are still closer to us. You you can't just cut people off because they're not believers or, you know. At least that's my understanding of it. If they're your brothers, sisters, whatever, you still have to maintain relations with them. Anyway, so that finishes up chapter. Eight, this was a short chapter. And we're at the forty-three mark, so I'm gonna just keep going on. Okay, chapter nine, repentance. And this, as you know, where say, chapter eight was about war, right? So this is a continuation. In the name of God, the almighty and merciful, I seek refuge in God from Satan, the accursed. And acquittal from God and his messenger to those with whom you made a covenant among the idolaters. Travel in the earth four months and know that you cannot escape God and that God will disgrace the false claimers of guidance. So this is an official. Proclamation that was made to the idolaters and. Just so you know, the the word idolaters, which in Arabic is mushrikin. Uh, this is not a pagan, I mean, it is a pagan thing where, you know, pagans do this, but. You know, it's also found in within religions, so religions and in the sense of Christians. They're they're idolaters because they ascribe a partnership to God, so it's referencing the people of the. The people of the writ and I'll make, it'll be clear as we move forward with that. I mean, not just exclusively, but they also reference in this mushrikin, okay? And a proclamation from God and his messenger to mankind on the day of the greater pilgrimage. God is free of the idolaters as this is messenger and if you repent, it is better for you, but if you turn away. Know that you cannot escape God and bear thou tidings to those who ignore warning of a painful punishment. Save the idolaters with whom you have made a covenant, then who have not been deficient towards you in anything. Nor assisted anyone against you, so fulfill to them your covenant to its term, God loves those of prudent fear. And when the inviolable months have passed, then kill the idolaters wherever you find them and seize them and restrain them and lie and wait for them at every place of ambush. But if they repent and uphold the duty and render the purity, then let them go their way, God is forgiving and merciful, see? That's why I said this is referencing. In part, the uh those people of the writ. Because the people of the writ are the ones who can uphold the commandments of God because they have the writ and they can render the purity. It's not talking about, okay, they became, they become Muslims and they start, you know. Doing the Muslim ritual prayers, see, they already have the writ, so they're supposed to uphold the writ. That's why it's saying, if they repent and uphold the duty and render the purity, then let them go their way. And if one of the idolaters seeks thy protection, then grant thou him protection until he hears the words of God. Then convey thou him to his place of security, is it not that they are people who know not? How can there be for the idolaters a covenant with God and with his messenger, save those with whom you made a covenant at the inviolable place of worship? So long as they take a straight path with you, then take a straight path with them, God loves those of prudent fear. How, when if they get the better of you, they observe neither pact of kinship nor obligation to protect. They please you with their mouths, but their hearts refuse and most of them are perfidious. As was mentioned in the last part of chapter seven, that those who are related by blood. Um, they are closer, so this is the part of the writ and so they're not respecting that. They have sold the proofs of God at a cheap price and turned away from his path, evil is what they did, see now, you see, this is talking about the. Uh, those who have the writ and they are of the mushrikin. Because they have the proofs of God, but they have bartered it for a cheap price for the worldly life. And their regard towards a believer neither pact of kinship nor obligation to protect and it is they who are the transgressors. But if they repent and uphold the duty and render the purity, then are they your brethren and doctrine and we set out in detail the proofs for people who know, see? Brethren doctrine. And if they renage on their oats after their covenant and revile your doctrine, then fight the leaders of denial, they have no oats that they might desist. Will you not fight a people who broke their oats and purpose to turn the messenger out and began against you the first time? Do you fear them? Then God is worthier that you should fear him if you be believers. Fight them, God will punish them at your hands and disgrace them and help you against them and heal the breasts of people who believe. And remove the wrath of their hearts and God will lance towards whom he wills and God is knowing and wise. If you think that you will be left when God knows not those among you who have striven and have taken besides God and his messenger and the believers, no confident. And God is aware of what you do. And you're sadly mistaken, it is not for the idolaters to inhabit the places of worship of God. Bearing witness against themselves to denial, those their works are vain and in the fire do they abide eternally. Yeah, again, this this thing about the mushrikin here is talking about the people of the book, the the idolaters within the people of the book. I mean, in a general sense, obviously mushrikin is anyone who associate partnership with God. And so someone who is a Hindu is also an idolater and. And that's what the mush- word mushrik would would be given to him because he's ascribing partnership to God. Uh, but here it's talking about those people who uh have the writ of God and. They're still idolaters. Uh, and this will be picked up later on. He only inhabits the places of worship of God who believes in God and the last day and upholds the duty and renders the purity and fears not save God. And maybe that those are of the guided. Not to belabor the point, but I wanna state explicitly here again that this is not talking about a ritual prayer here because. Idolaters are doing ritual prayers, okay? The Christians do their own prayers and. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, so it's not talking about. Doing a ritual prayer, it's talking about uphold the commandments of God. So those people who are. The true inhabitants of the place of worship, they have the right to inhabit the place of worship. Are those who believe in God in the last day and hold the commandments of God and render the purity and they fear no one except God. Have you made the giving of water to the pilgrim and the inhabiting of the inviolable place of worship like him who believes in God in the last day and strives in the cause of God? They are not equal before God. They are not equal before God and God guides not the wrongdoing people. Those who heed warning and immigrate and strive in the cause of God with their wealth. And their lives are of more tremendous degree before God and it is they who are the attainers of success. So something to think about. Their lord gives them glad tidings of mercy from him and approval and they have gardens therein of enduring bliss. They are abiding eternally therein forever with God is a great reward. Oh, you who heed warning, take not your fathers and your brethren as allies if they prefer denial to faith. And whoso takes them as allies among you, it is they who are the wrongdoers. Say thou, if your brothers and your sons and your brothers and you if, say thou. If your fathers and your sons and your brothers and your wives and your kindred and the wealth you have acquired and trade away in your fear decline. And dwellings with which you are pleased, be dearer to you than God and his messenger and striving in his cause. Then wait until God brings his command and God guides not the perfidious people. God has helped you in many places and on the day of Hunain, when you were impressed at your multitude. But it availed you nothing and the earth was straightened for you, vast as it was, then you turned and fled. Then God sent, then sent God his tranquility upon his messenger and upon the believers and sent down forces you did not see. And punish those who ignore warning and that is the reward of the false claimers of guidance. Then does God relent after that towards whom he wills and God is forgiving and merciful. Oh, you heed warning, those who ascribe a partnership are unclean, so approach not the inviable place of worship after this day here. And if you fear poverty, then will God enrich you out of his bounty if he wills, God is knowing and wise. Now, I just wanna stop off here and give you some other translations here because a lot of people, they're like, well, that's not what the Arabic says. Um and there's a specific reason why Brother Gans is translating this as approach not, uh and you can read his footnotes on that. Yeah, that's a big footnote, so I'm not gonna read it, but I I I do encourage you to read it. I'm just gonna go over Arberry, oh believers, the idolaters are indeed unclean, so let them not come near the holy ma- mosque after this year of theirs. If you fear poverty, God shall surely enrich you of his bounty if you will, God is all-knowing, all-wise. Now, you know, a lot of people get hung up on these things. Uh Sam Garens is wrong or you know, this is not what it says and you know, this is what it means, okay, fine. Whatever, the point is that this Masjid Al-Haram is not here anymore and this is a directive to those people at that time. You know, you people, people fail to see the context, this is talking to a specific people, a specific time. When the messenger was alive, when this place was known, none of this is true at the moment, I mean now, so. You you just read it in the sense that, you know, it's it's part of the the events that occurred. At the time of uh the messenger. Continuing on verse twenty-nine, fight those who believe not in God or the last day and make not unlawful what God and his messenger have made unlawful. And adhere not to the doctrine of truth among those given the writ. Until they make reparation under supervision when they are brought low, see now we get to the crux of this, this is those given the writ. You're supposed to fight them. Because they don't, they don't believe in God on the last day and they not make unlawful what God and his messenger have made unlawful. Cause they have it in their books, but they're not implementing it. And now, the this this thing about the mushrikin, like I said, it's talking about those given the writ. Um in this context. We get to the Jews and the Christians who were doing this. Verse thirty, and the rabbinic Jews say Uzzair is the son of God and the Christians say the Messiah is the son of God. That is the speech of their mouths, they imitate the speech of those who ignored warning before, may God curse them, how are they deluded? See, they're only following the this, they're they're just, these ideas are not new, that's what the whole point is, Uzzair or Messiah is Jesus, the son of God. You go back and you look at other religions before, you know, the Greeks and Romans and Egyptians, what were they doing? They were doing the same thing, so. That's why it says they imitate the speech of those who ignored warning before. And then verse thirty-one, they take their rabbis and their religious scholars as lords rather than God and the Messiah, son of Mary. And they were not commanded save to serve, save, serve one God, there is no God save he, glory be to him above that to which they ascribe a partnership. I just want you to think about the Muslims, how they have taken their mu- uh the imams and religious scholars as lords, because they. Um in the sense that they are following their. They um. Wh- what the religious scholars are forbidding and allowing, this is what the Muslims are blindly accepting. Unless they show justification from the writ of God, why something is forbidden or allowed. If you follow them blindly, then you know, you have taken them as lords. Verse thirty-two, they want to extinguish the light of God with their mouths and God refuses save to perfect his light, though the false claimers of guidance be averse. He is that sent his messenger with the guidance and the doctrine of truth that he might make it manifest over all doctrine, though the idolaters be averse. This is God perfecting his light. Um though they they are averse to it, he sent his messenger with the guidance and the doctrine of truth. Oh, you who heed warning, many among the rabbis and the religious scholars consume the wealth of men in vanity and turn away from the path of God. And those who amass gold and silver and spend it not in the cause of God, give thou them tidings of a painful punishment. The day it will be heated in the fire of Gehenna, then there will be branded their foreheads and their sides and their backs. This is what you amass for your souls, so taste what you amassed. Is this not true? The imams, Muftis, priests, rabbis, whoever, they're wealthy men. They make a, they make religion a business. Verse thirty-six. The count of months is with God, twelve months were in the writ of God, the day he created the heavens and the earth, from it are four inviolable. That is the right doctrine, so wrong not your souls concerning them and fight the idolaters altogether as they fight you altogether and know that God is with those of prudent fear. So there's twelve months in a year and all of those four are inviolable as in you, you can't fight in them. Now, what those four are, that's that that's left up to you to decide. Um that's my understanding of it. Verse thirty-seven, postmortem is but an increase in denial whereby those who ignore warning are led astray, they make it lawful one a year and make it unlawful another year. That the count might agree with what God made unlawful, so they make lawful what God made unlawful. Made fair to them is the evil of their deeds and God guides not the people, the false claimers of guidance. So basically, what they were doing was they would, you know. Postpone, right? So they would say, okay. Instead of the four uh months of the year in which fighting is prohibited, they might go and fight, you know. Only they they would only forbid two months of the out of the year and then next year they would do six months, so you know, so that the count would be. Four months in two years. And that's something that, you know, that's the games they were playing. Verse thirty-eight, oh you heed warning, what ails you that when it is said to you, go forth in the cause of God? You cling to the earth, are you content with the life of this world or the hereafter? But the enjoyment of the life of this world and the hereafter is only small, save you go forth. He will punish you with a painful punishment and replace you with a people other than you and you will not harm him at all and God is over all things powerful. It's pretty selfish, planetary. Fighting in the cause of God is a big thing in the Quran. Save you help him and God helped him and those who ignore warning turned him out the second of two, when they were in the cave, when he said to his companion. Grave thou not, God is with us, then God sent down his tranquility upon him and strengthened him with forces you did not see. And made the word of those who ignore warning the lowest and the word of God, it is the uppermost and God is exalted in might and wise. This is according to traditional understanding is talking about Abu Bakr, who was the companion of the uh the messenger. Uh it's interesting, the Quran doesn't give us any names of these men that the Muslims, you know, revere so much, Abu Bakr, Guhtumal, Ali. Um Omar, these are not in the Quran. Go forth light or heavy and strive with your wealth and your lives in the cause of God, that is better, that is best for you if you would know. Had it been goods there nearby in a short journey, they would have followed thee, but far for them was the destination. And they will swear by God, had we been able, we would have gone forth with you, destroying their souls and God knows that they are liars. God pardon thee, why grantest thou them leave until it was clear to thee who spoke the truth and thou knewest the liars? No leave to those who believe in God in the last day, ask of thee from striving with their wealth and their lives and God knows those of prudent fear. There but ask leave of tho- of thee those who believe not in God in the last day and whose hearts doubt, so they in their doubt are wavering. And had they wished to go forth, they would have made preparation for it, but God was averse to their being sent forth and held them back. And it was said, sit with those that sit. Had they gone forth with you, they would have increased you only in ruin and been active in your midst seeking means of denial for you. And among you are eager listeners to them and God knows the wrongdoers. They sought the means of denial before and overturned matters for thee until the truth came and the command of God was made manifest when they were averse. Okay, so we're gonna stop here, this is chapter nine, verse forty-eight, we're gonna continue on with forty-nine, the next session, we're over the one hour mark. Anyway, that's it for now, God willing, until next time, peace and blessings be upon you.